I'd like to call the Monday, October 4th, 6:30 PM, public hearing to order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker, I'll be talking about him later, March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 38 and 20, the city of Quincy Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, channel QATV 9, Government Access. So this public hearing is on the council order of 2021-089 utility grant location, National Grid Gas Rota and State Street and Kilby Street. At this point, I would last like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise the hand feature when you are called upon, and please state your name and address. So do we have any? Not being said, I would like to call upon the Ward 1 councillor, Dave McCarthy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there someone on for National Grid?
I don't see anyone.
No, okay. Just for the, for the record, Mr. Chairman, my, my, my questions were just going to be if, if they were on, I wanted to know the extent of the work on Kilby and Rota and the length of time, just for the minutes. I'll try to follow up with National Grid myself, but I thought I could get a quick answer tonight. Thank you.
I wish they were on too, because we all got our National Grid bills today in the mail, so. But no written correspondence have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. So seeing not further public comment, I'd like to close the public hearing at 6:32. Two minutes, that's not bad. Thank you. At 6:35, I'd like to call the Monday, October 4th, 6:35 public hearing to order. In accordance with, again, Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 38 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access TV, QATV, and channel QATV 9, Government Access. This public hearing is on the council order 2021-090 utility grant location, National Grid, Adams Street and Whitwell Street Hospital site. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise the hand feature when you are called upon, please state your name and address. So do we have anybody who would like to speak in favor or opposition?
John Rotifeld has raised his hand.
John, John, John.
Am I there?
You're on, John.
Hey, how you doing? To show how dedicated that I am, like a truck took down my internet, there's no wire on my house, so I had no internet. So I am talking to you live from the bathroom of Starbucks in town, I was too noisy with their radio, I couldn't hear anything. But I'm on the free wifi in Starbucks right now, in the bathroom.
You are dedicated, John. John, you are dedicated. Give it to us, John. What's, what do you got?
But I was just gonna say, this is the one on Whitwell Street, I just wanted an opportunity to talk to, but the, uh, the main thing is that I want to make sure that developer, like this is a chance for the Ward 5 councillor and for all the city councils at large, when one of these developers need their electric and they need their utilities hooked up, that's a good way to kind of get them to maybe do something for the neighbors. I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, Fox Rock, a lot of the houses on Whitwell got a lot of dirt and dust over the last year. It'd be a nice sort of goodwill if they would reach out and maybe pressure wash all the houses that are in that area before you put up any utilities.
John, I really don't mean to interrupt you, but this is about the actual, it's not about what's the situation with the construction and, and the, uh, the, uh...
Well, I'm just saying, before they add in the utility...
I understand some, but we're talking about either the for or against with the National Grid.
Well, I would be for it, you know, if they, you know, like I said, I mean, for, for a long time, obviously, I would like the road fully closed again, because it's terrible, you know, we need that construction project completed as soon as possible on the streets, so it's not a, you know, the cars can freely travel up and down Whitwell. So if this is part of the plan to complete the project, I'm, you know, obviously in favor of them getting electricity, I just want them to make sure that they, they take care of the people that live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
John, thank you for, thank you for your input. As always, your passion for the city is great. Thank you. Uh, any, anyone else? Do we have anybody else? Uh, not, so that, not, uh, so no written correspondence has been received by the clerk of committees for this item, and seeing no further public comment, I would like to close the public hearing at 6:39. Thank you. We are back again, and I have to read the same thing again. So I would like to call the Monday, October 4th, 6:35 public hearing to order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 38 and 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening, I'm out of breath, these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, channel QATV 9, Government Access. So the public hearing is on the 2021-091 utility Mass Electric Verizon, 118 118 Old Colony Ave. So at this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise the hand feature when you are called upon, please state your name and address. Bueller, nobody? Nobody? Nope, Bueller? Nope. Okay. So seeing not, uh, no further public comment, I will be closing this hearing at 6:41. I think I beat my record.
The Monday, October 4th, 2021 city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councillor Andronico.
Present.
Councillor King.
Present.
Councillor DeBona.
Present.
Councillor Harris.
Present.
Councillor Mahoney.
Present.
Councillor McCarthy.
Present.
Councillor Palmucci.
Present.
Councillor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Nine members you have a call.
Thank you. If you could, I'll just put ourselves on mute to respect a moment of silence for all of the women and men both currently serving here and abroad, as well as all the frontline workers still fighting the pandemic. Madam Clerk, could you be the opening one, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any mediums. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker on June 16th, 2021, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote radio conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, channel QATV 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
2021-095, order proposed repres ding for ward and precincts for the Board of Registries.
Thank you. Before I go to my colleagues with any questions, Madam Clerk, I'm actually just gonna go to you for a quick presentation, and then I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Madam President and City Council. Before you all this evening is a proposed 2020 repres ding map, along with the legal ward descriptions, legal precinct descriptions, and block listings. This repres ding proposal has been ongoing effort since 2018, and in mid-August of 2021, we received our federal numbers of 101,636. Since then, we have reconsidered our ward and precincts to be equally distributed throughout our city, within 5% variance. On September 28th, I, along with the other members of the Board of Registries, held a public hearing and had a vote to accept the map as proposed. That vote was unanimous, and tonight I asked that you consider the map before you for city council approval. Once, and if that happens this evening, it would be signed by the mayor, and on Wednesday, October 6th, I will be presenting it to the LEDRC and the state for their final approval, and the effective date will be December 31st, 2021, and go into effect for January 1st of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just going to turn this over to my colleagues with any questions or comments that they might have for our clerk. Okay, seeing none, do we have any motions then?
A motion to approve?
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. And we have a second by Councillor King. Madam Clerk, I just want to quickly, before we call the roll, thank you and those on your team so much for all of the work you've done around this. I know that, you know, well before the census came out in 2020, well before the pandemic, there was a lot of planning that you had put into all of this, and, you know, obviously having to adjust for that during the pandemic, making sure that everyone was counted, I think it's an incredible feat to be able to get these kind of results in, right? To know that we've now exceeded 100,000 folks here in the city, certainly there are some folks that still aren't counted, but just to see, you know, the increase in numbers and the accuracy of the work that you have produced, I mean, it's, I've said this to you before in private, but I certainly look at this opportunity to say, I don't know how you did it. I'm exceptionally proud of the work you have put out for this city, so thank you so much. And I do actually, before we go to a roll call, do you want to recognize two of my colleagues who now also have a hand raised? So if I could just go to Councillor Palmucci first, and then Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Palmucci?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the clerk, Nicole, do you have a number on how many people are switching wards or precincts?
So I do, there's about 16,500 people that are being affected by the changes throughout the city, and out of that, about five, 4,500 of them are registered voters. And so with that, we will, of course, next year, do a big mailing, we will advertise all of the changes in the Quincy Sun in the weeks to come, and we'll do a huge mailing to let everyone know their new voting place.
And just to be clear, this doesn't take effect until January 2022, correct?
That's right.
So anybody who's impacted, it wouldn't impact where or who they can vote for in the upcoming municipal election this November, right?
That's right. November 2nd, nothing is going to change.
We had discussed previously about the state's effort, or the, I should say, the legislature's effort to redraw these maps on our behalf. Do you have an update as to what's going on with that and how that effort impacts this decision we're making tonight?
To be honest with you, I do not have an update. I have been working very closely with the state, and I was told that as long as we get our map in by October 31st, they will, of course, consider our map when they do their own redistricting plan.
Okay, and I believe I read today that they're still, that's still in committee, the state legislature's plan. I could be wrong, but I read something about it today. I think that's all I have, and so you said, when are you going to notify, you said you're gonna notify folks, when would you notify them, in January?
We're gonna, we're gonna notify everybody in the newspaper, but individually, I like to wait and do it a little closer to the election. We have done it that way in the past, and it's fresh in people's mind that there was a change, but, you know, it, I can look at it again, it can't hurt to do it twice.
Well, that makes sense. So you would do it, you would do it ahead of whenever the preliminary was in 2022, I guess, September?
That's right, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. I notified the, so in Ward 4, the changes are, Ward 4 is losing Penns Hill Federal Ave and regaining parts of, or the half of Brewer's Corner that was actually, it's the reverse of what happened 10 years ago, where half of Brewer's Corner was cut out of Ward 4 and Penns Hill was added, so it's reverting. But so that you know, I had mailed out the folks on Penns Hill, letting them know, and I can see the wisdom in waiting until after this election to do it, because I got a lot of phone calls that folks were concerned about it impacting this particular election in September and November, so. All right, well, thank you very much. I know this is not an easy task. It wasn't 10 years ago when Mr. Shea did it, and I trust it won't be 10 years from now with whoever else does it, but I'm happy to support it this evening. Thank you for your hard work, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councillor Palmucci, Councillor McCarthy, and then Councillor DeBona.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to echo a few of your comments, Madam President, Clerk Crispo has done an exceptional job with everything in that, in that position. She's very professional. I know she had reached out to all the councillors in regards to these changes, some were minor and some were a little bit more than others, but her professionalism, work ethic is just very, very good, very helpful to us, and a lot of times she's, she's answering the question before you ask it, so, just a great job, Nick. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here's Councillor McCarthy. Councillor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President, and through you, if I could, to the, to Madam Clerk, I think the biggest thing for me is thank you for all your hard work as well, and thank you for reaching out. I think that the biggest question for me is to try to make the precincts for the citizens of the city the most easiest way to vote, whether their travel time is affected by, you know, the polls being in different areas of the city. Obviously, some of them have changed just a little bit. Do you anticipate some of the polling areas, like 1,000 Southern Otterie, is that gonna be a polling area that continues to stay there, or is that gonna be over at Clifford Marshall Elementary School for the residents of 1,000 Southern Otterie?
So I wish I had an answer for you right now. However, for November, it will be at the Clifford Marshall, and going forward, we will have to see. I've been working with the management group at the 1,000 Southern Otterie in hopes that we can go back there for voting place, and they want that as well, and I know the residents there want that as well. So we are going to work with them in the future, you know, with the new Delta variant, they did not feel safe having us there. I do want to say that I know some people, you know, do get disenfranchised with having to go to a new polling place or to, but there are some options available, and you can certainly vote by mail now, you can vote early voting, or you can vote absentee. So, you know, if there's any reason, you can certainly call our office, we can help you through that process. It is on our city website as well, all the information there, if you want to take advantage of those different opportunities to vote, either in person, early, by mail, or absentee. I know that, you know, in 1,000 Southern Otterie is a great, it's a day out for them, and I know that they like to congregate, get together, and, and see each other on that day, and so that's important, and we don't want to lose that, we love that about our city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, just, just to, you know, that's Ward 2, and as an at-large councillor, I always look at the convenience of seniors getting to the, getting to some of the voting areas. I know back in 1, 2, about four years ago, it was at the Germantown Neighborhood Center, and that switched to O'Brien Towers on Bicknell, and that made a huge change, just being inside the building and being able to just go downstairs and vote. It made it a lot easier in the public coming from the outside as well to come in there, so that was almost the opposite effects. It went from Germantown Neighborhood Center to O'Brien Towers, and now we have it going from 1,000 Southern Otterie to Clifford Marshall Elementary. I do see a couple of the other areas that have switched a little bit. Just, do you anticipate the 26 polling places to stay intact, or do you anticipate some of them bunching up together and doing like, like Beechwood Knoll has a duel, St. John's Church has a duel, do you anticipate us, any moving of polling places?
Not right now. We did say, I did speak with Mr. Mayor and talked to him about some polling places and some concerns, but we, we said, let's get through the repres ding, and then we'll take a look at them again. But as far as doubling up things like that, I think that everybody's pretty good where they are, the polling places. I have to say, Quincy Public Schools, Clifford Marshall Principal, Nick Ahern, has been amazing in letting us in and be part of that neighborhood there, and I appreciate that very much.
Now, I know previously you went out to a lot of the senior housings before the election to do like some type of like a voting in early. Do you, I mean, because the seniors are always asking me if, can I, can we get some type of ride to the polls? Can we, do you anticipate maybe helping out with that aspect of it? Or do you, do you anticipate if you don't get back to 1,000 Southern Otterie that you would, you would have a setup where you would go there at early, early voting time?
So that, right now, that's not an assisted living designated healthcare facility, but we could certainly look at that, you know, for 2022.
Thank you so much for all your time, Madam, Madam Clerk. I've known, we've talked over the years about this and how, how important it is to me to allow the citizens and the residents of the city to be able to vote the easiest way possible and not make it difficult for them to get to the polls. A lot of them are very old fashioned, they would still like to go to the, to the actual date rather than doing it early, so I know I'm one of them, I've tried to do the early voting, but I like to go inside the booth on voting day. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor DeBona. Councillor Phelan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the city clerk. Just a question I had, was one of the biggest areas, I think, looking at the map, an increase in population in Quincy Center? Because I remember, I did it with George Jay in 2010, and I also did it in 2000, so it seems to be that that has changed, one of the main reasons why Ward 5 has changed, is that correct?
You are correct. The new housing units in Quincy Center area have definitely made that dense down there, so we did try to work on the edges of our community, all around the water and around Blue Hills, and come into the middle, and that's how we came to this map, and I think it's a good map. I, I'm really proud of it. I think that, you know, you have your diverse sections, you have your neighborhoods all still intact, and, you know, that downtown area is growing, and I think that probably 10 years from now, we'll be putting on more precincts and having its own polling place down there.
So basically, right now, when you look at it, you were able to do this without increasing any precincts? So every, every precinct has to be within a range, and do these all meet their range?
They did. It's within 5% of each other, and they are, they, they are at, I want to say, 3,200 to 3,500 people per precinct without going over the threshold of 4,000. So I think, you know, within the next 10 years, we probably will have to add some, but with the new options of early voting, mail-in voting, and absentee voting, I think that, you know, it's, it's gonna be okay for the people that do take advantage of going to the polls on election day, and the people that take advantage of voting by mail.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam, Madam Clerk. Just a comment, I, I've done this on the other side several, a couple of times, and I know how difficult it is, and I know the amount of work that has to be put in between the clerk's office and the Secretary of State's office, and looking at the map, it looks, you know, is there ever gonna be complete? Everyone loves it. Sometimes there isn't, because there will be some changes, but I think keeping people's precincts as close to where they live as possible, I think is always the top goal of this. So I'm gonna commend you and your staff for doing a great job and working with the Secretary of State's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Phelan. Any other questions or comments for our clerk? I don't think, I just have one more, I'm sorry, that's okay. I just want to know, do you know the demographic breakdown by any chance? Do you have that information in front of you?
We have that information, I can certainly get it to you.
That'd be great. Thank you. So we do have a motion to approve by Councillor McCarthy, second by Councillor King. That'd be great. Thank you. Uh, so we do have a motion to approve by Council McCarthy, second by Council Kane. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilor Andronico.
Yes.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor DeBona.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
And impressive, again, really impressive job, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, please.
2021-094, amending the resolve seeking enforcement of commercial traffic being on Furnace Burke Parkway and Quincy Shore Drive.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Council Phelan.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Um, after the last meeting, we put this resolve in. And uh, as we did, we also realized that there were a couple of other problems with a couple of other streets, mainly Quincy Shore Drive. And Council Harris brought up some very, very good points. So it was up, it wa- it was my, my decision, it was something I thought at that point, it would be a good idea to amend the the original order and add Quincy Shore Drive. And after I got calls from some people, Council Mahoney received several calls on it. So I thought it would be important to uh, to amend and bring this back. Almost identical problems after talking with some people in the neighborhood happens on Quincy Shore Drive as well. And I think it's uh, these streets were never meant, big tractor trailer trucks, these huge delivery trucks that are coming down and then taking a right. And they're on some very narrow side streets. I just got a, a camera from a, from a Ring phone over the weekend. And it showed a big, huge tractor trailer truck coming off uh Furnace Parkway and cutting through a neighborhood of uh Wall Street, Oakland Ave, and actually going at excessive rate of speed. Uh, so I think it's, they shouldn't end up on these streets, but they do because they, there's a, there is a lack of enforcement on the commercial ban that is posted on both Furnace Parkway and on Quincy Shore Drive. So I would like to, to add this in tonight and ask my councilors to vote for it because it's, it's just, it adds something that um I heard from several other people that is also a problem in those areas. And I talked with uh Jim Manning, the Clerk of Committees, and she had held the, the mailings to go out to the state police, to the DCR, and to the delegation till after the vote tonight. So we would include both of these streets because both are in need of uh, of enforcement of that code. I think it went down when we had the, we had the pandemic. But certainly with traffic kicking back up, it's, it's a problem that's resurrected itself again. So uh, so I'll, I'll turn it over. I, I urge my colleagues, I, yes, for on this. Thank you.
So I'll take that as a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Council DeBona. Any questions or comments on this item before we move forward? Great. Madam Clerk, oh, sorry, Council Harris, yes. Sorry, let me just unmute you, Counselor. One second.
I got it. That's me. Sorry. Um, I just want to thank um everybody who's jumped on this. Uh, Council Palmucci, Council Mahoney, uh, Council Phelan, o- of course, who, 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 again, and Council DeBona. And my fellow councilors, especially uh, I, I'm going to reach out to my um, the uh, the at-large councilors. Uh, this is, this is, this problem is act- actually is, is worse than you can even imagine. And it, I experienced it the other, other eve- Saturday evening. And it's, it's more than just the, the, you know, the vehicles, because these vehicles travel at night too. Uh, especially at night, especially the big trucks, they sneak through and, and it really has to, it has to be dealt with. And, and um, at, at, in two weeks, I will be presenting a, another, a similar resolution about the fact that the work in my ward, and I don't know if it touches um Council Phelan's ward, excuse me, on um, on the lighting at, on Quincy Shore Drive. You, if, if everybody was to get in their car and go there right now, it's pitch black in the middle of this rainstorm that we got going on. It is absolutely a disgrace what the DCR has done. And I know that members of this council have received numerous um emails and calls. And the number of calls we, I know all of us have made to um the folks. And the fact that they're in the dark, you talk about being in the dark. It's absolutely crazy. And we have these trucks that we're going to be um voting on this resolution that are, are traveling in the middle of the night. And we have folks that, that, that walk their dogs in the middle of the night and uh late evening, early evening. Uh, and now we're getting into um, of course, uh daylight savings time is, is taking place. And it's just not safe. And I can't believe the DCR has allowed Quincy Shore Drive to not have the lighting done. And it's bad enough that the sidewalks, they replace real sidewalks with asphalt. The folks that I represent, all the way from CVS, all the way down to Council Phelan's um uh ward. It's unacceptable. It's, it's crazy. So I'll be reaching out again. Uh, I know some of my texts, uh emails to uh, uh, Representative Ayers, who lives right there. He knows the situation. Uh, I, I'm, I want to go right to the governor. This, this city has supported the governor every time he's gone up for uh election. And we need him to step in now. So if I have to be the bad guy, which, you know, sometimes you're, you're chastised for being the bad guy, speaking up for what isn't, uh, what's going along. I, I mean, I admire the things that the uh state legislature, the, our governor has given to the city of, of Quincy. He's been a great partner. But again, when it comes to the people I represent and every ward counselor, if we don't put our head on the chopping block and say, I am not going to accept it, then I shouldn't be in office. And that's all I have to say about that. I'll be back with this issue. But this all comes together with the trucks. And again, thank you, Council Phelan, for bringing this up. The trucks um and uh, uh, what's going on with FedEx and the folks in North Quincy going through our, our, our neighborhoods. It's, it's unacceptable. They should be going up Commander Shea Boulevard, doing what they said they were going to do from the get-go uh eight years ago when they presented the project. So again, I might not be the most popular person tonight with some folks about this. But I'm not going to defend the people I represent. So thank you, folks, and y- your support. And I, I hope everybody supports this uh resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Harris. So we have a motion to approve by Council Phelan, second by Council DeBona. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
The item passes. Thank you. So we're going to move on to the approval of the previous meeting minutes from September 27th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council DeBona. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes from last week? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes passed. Communications and reports in the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have a grant of location here. Excuse me, I'm not seeing it. Oh, I got it. Sorry.
All right.
Uh, utility grant of location for mass electric on Marymount Parkway. I would like to um put this into ordinance and advertise.
Great. Thank you. Right, moving on. Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Seeing none, reports of committees. We'll go to Council Harris first and then Council Mahoney.
Thank you. Um, thank you. So um during the report, uh, during tonight, uh Public Works Committee uh items um to be passed. Public hearing uh was held tonight. Um, 2021-089, utility grant location, National Grid, uh Rota Street, State Street, and Kilby Street. Positive recommendation uh from uh the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council McCarthy. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Item passes. Council Harris?
Yes, um, a public hearing uh, um, was held this evening, um, 2021-090. Uh, utility grant uh location, National Grid, Adams Street and Whitwell Street Hospital site. Positive recommendation uh from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Phelan. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
No.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
No.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
No.
Six members passes.
Thank you. Council Harris?
Okay, so the final one was uh this evening, a public hearing was held, 2021-091, utility mass electric Verizon. 118 Old Colony Ave, um positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council McCarthy. Any questions or comments on this item? Hey, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
No.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. The item passes. Council Harris, were there any more out of your committee?
That is it. Thank you. Thank you so much, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mahoney?
Thank you very much. So the ordinance, ordinance committee has items to be passed. All of these were traffic requests and they were advertised in the 9/23/21 Quincy Sun. And it's a positive recommendation that's being made from the ordinance, ordinance, ordinance committee. So for Ward one, Council McCarthy, um, um, motion 2021-084, add handicap parking at 33 Russell Park. Uh, motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council McCarthy. Any questions on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Ward two, Council Andronico, um, order number 2021-085, add no parking on east side of Lebanon Street, Washington Street to Curtis Ave. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council Harris. Any questions on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan. President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you.
Moving on to order number 2021-086, add no parking on the south and west sides of Burns Ave, 200th east of Charles, Charles Mount Ave to Quincy Ave. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Andronico. Any questions on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci. Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to 2021-087, add stop sign to at Ruggles Street, northbound of Commonwealth Ave. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Council Andronico. Any questions on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Ward three, Council Kane, motion 2021-088, add stop sign at Myopia Road, westbound at Teresa Road. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Kane. Any questions on this item? Great, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Council Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay.
And that wraps it up. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Any other reports of any other committees? Okay, seeing none, presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Seeing none, motions, orders, and resolutions. Moving along, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is going to be on Monday, October 18th, and then uh, follow by that, it's going to be Monday, November 8th. I know that um, that are the three committees with ordinance, oversight, and finance, we do have some meetings that we'll be scheduling. So we'll make sure that once those dates are set, we'll get them out there. Um, but are there any questions about the scheduling of committee meetings? All right, great. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.